Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, February 13th, 2018. Now called to order at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking any questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. The first item on our agenda this evening is an A&R plan for 103 Elm Street.
So, Mr. Chairman, the A&R plan for 103 Elm Street is a result of the special permit that the board granted for two Hammerhead lots, the tail end of 2017. The plans are exactly the way they were laid out in front of us before during the public hearing process, aside from some of the more specific criteria being removed for the A&R. I'll pull them up on the screen so you can see them. It should look familiar. Yes, it's 103 Elm, the Sundine Estate, and it'd be a Hammerhead lot on each side as we reviewed previously at the public hearing. So, the A&R plan, just per procedure, just needs to be signed by the board in order for the lot division.
They meet the frontage requirement, they have the circle, they show the location of the house, it's not less than 50-foot restriction in each of the driveways.
Yep, they meet all of our standard Hammerhead lot requirements.
Scott, any questions?
No questions.
John?
No.
Wendy?
No.
Jason?
None.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Four signatures. I'll send this around. I'll do this. New pens. Whoa. Taxes must be going up next year. Did you pick up an assistant pen? No. They didn't have those on the rack. They were sold out of staples. Top here, top there, don't peek and eye.
Want to do the other one? Do you want to let people know it isn't? I'll just read through what's there. So, they've continued the hearings. So, they've continued hearings. Thank you.
Going here to pick this one up?
Good luck.
Thank you. I didn't know if I had to get it from the town clerk or anything.
No, she's good.
She's been okay.
I'll be also.
Okay, great. Thank you.
For those of you in the audience, we have three public hearings tonight that have been continued. One is a 7 o'clock public hearing. The applicant was Auburn Planning Board, request to hold a public hearing to discuss potential rescission of definitive subdivision approval in accordance with MGL CH 41 and 81W in Auburn Subdivision Rules and Regulations, Section 6.3 for a subdivision known as Pakichog Farms at 71 Curtis Street. This will be continued to March 27th, 2018, at the applicant's request.
Let's take a vote. Take a vote now. Make the motion to continue the 7:00 PM applicant, so March 27th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. We have a 701 applicant, Masad Family LLC, requesting modification of site plan approval under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration on property located at 54 Faith Avenue. It's been requested that this be continued also to March 27th, 2018, at the applicant's request. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion to continue the 7:01 meeting to March 27th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just read through the chairman. So, if anyone is here wishing to provide comments in any of those three public hearings, we won't be having discussion on those this evening. It would be at the meeting in two weeks. I feel like you need to stay if you're here for those. That wasn't a type of, those are both March and a February one? Correct.
Two March and one February.
Okay, we have a second A&R at 104 to 108 South Street in Auburn. Can you?
I believe there's someone here for that one. If you'd like to come up.
Good evening, Chairman. Wayne LeBlanc, I'm representing the Wedding Family Trust. And what we're looking to do is divide off a portion of the property owned by the Wedding Family Trust, 14 and 1/2 acres, with an acre and 1/2 being transferred to the daughter of the family of the Wedding Family Trust who lives next door at 104...108, I'm sorry.
So, it's the piece that we see that wraps up the right side and around the back?
That's correct. It goes around the property, and it's an acre and 1/2, leaving 13 acres for the remaining house and barn and other structures located on the original parcel.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Is there a particular reason to do this? Is it to correct any issues or?
It doesn't correct anything. If you can see on the left-hand rear corner, there was a portion of a building which was known as a kennel that was actually built over the line, but it's as a result of a resolution of some litigation that we resolved by doing this.
Okay. And the driveway too?
Yeah.
Corner?
That's correct.
And isn't there also a garden here too?
I'm sorry?
There's also a garden?
There's a garden that's not shown on there that was part of the disputed area. That's correct.
Any questions, Scott?
No, it conforms. It looks like you're fixing some of the encroachments, so.
Quick question, where's the driveway for 104?
I could show it on an aerial if you'd like.
I just want to make sure there is one.
This is here. Fourth driveway, I believe, is here. Right here.
Okay.
There's your garden. Mr. Chairman, I didn't have any issues with the application I presented either.
Wendy? Jason?
None.
None? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the subdivision.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
So, do I have, Mr. Chairman, the only issue I had with these plans, and I'll have to remind HST Group next time they give us an A&R, is that there are only four signature lines, and there's five of you. So, if anyone would like to have this one off, you're more than welcome. I just need four signatures on this plan.
I'm gonna look at that one. Just type what's got next to him. It's okay, he's saying stuff on there.
Yeah, right.
I can sign one, you can sign one. Alternate.
I got you something else. I hope so. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Wendy?
I have many questions right now.
So, John, would you like to see elevations and contours put on that part?
Absolutely. Just type what's got next to him.
It went there today.
Scott, any questions?
No, it conforms. It looks like you're fixing some of the encroachments, so.
Quick question, where's the driveway for 104?
I could show it on an aerial if you'd like.
I just want to make sure there is one.
This is here. Fourth driveway, I believe, is here. Right here.
Okay.
There's your garden. Mr. Chairman, I didn't have any issues with the application I presented either.
Wendy? Jason?
None.
None? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the subdivision.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
So, do I have, Mr. Chairman, the only issue I had with these plans, and I'll have to remind HST Group next time they give us an A&R, is that there are only four signature lines, and there's five of you. So, if anyone would like to have this one off, you're more than welcome. I just need four signatures on this plan.
I'm gonna look at that one. I'm gonna look at that one. Next time.
It's okay, he's saying stuff on there.
Yeah, right.
I can sign one, you can sign one. Alternate.
I got you something else. I hope so. All right. Thank you. 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 Good night.
The next public hearing is a 7:05 PM. The applicant is Mark Mallett, requesting special permit under Section 5.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to create a Hammerhead lot for a new single-family residence on property located at 165...161 to 165 South Street. Is the applicant present?
Make the motion to open the meeting.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi, I'm Jason Dubois, representing Mark Mallett from DC Engineering and Survey. Proposed plan is a special permit request for a Hammerhead lot. Currently, Mark lives at 165 South Street and owns the land in the back. There's kind of a lot going on in this plan, so I'll try and kind of go through it, and then we can go through some questions. Should I get up and just kind of point? So, it's? Yeah. So, currently, he lives here at 165.
Just stand on this side so they can see.
Okay. 165 is right here, that's where his house is now. The Hammerhead lot would be in the back. This is the property line here. Currently, this lot comes out through this section here to South Street. We're proposing to basically make 165 property lines down through here, create another 50-foot strip through extra frontage that he has, so the access can come down through an existing kind of gravel driveway that's already there, put a proposed house in the back here. You can't really see it on here, but we do have the arc shown. Septic system would be going in the back of the house here, with the well over here. The lot is a little over five acres for this rear lot here. There's some wetlands shown that come around through here that have been delineated and located on this plan. And this property line back here used to come back a little bit further, like this, which is now being changed for this Hammerhead as well. That's basically it. So, is there any questions I can?
Could you point out the well again, please?
The proposed well's gonna go right up in this area here.
How far is that from the septic?
It's well over 100 feet. It's... Yeah. To the proposed septic system?
Yes.
For the new house? It's probably 140 feet or so.
And the other lot to the right of it as we see it, is that gonna be another lot?
That's just gonna be considered non-builable lot.
It doesn't have the right frontage on it?
No.
Sure. I just want to contribute some history on this application. This application has actually been before the planning board in 2012. This was a Hammerhead lot, it's similar in nature, but it also was accompanied by an earth fill permit, two special permits that were both granted by this board for unbeknownst reasons, and maybe Mr. Mallett can allude to it, but the Hammerhead lot clearly wasn't pursued, it ended up expiring, so it's back before us here today for relatively similar design. But, right, so, well, one of the things that I'm trying to understand is the earth fill permit. The earth fill permit was carried out, and then fill's been brought to the site, and even doing that. But I guess my question is, is there remaining fill, and how much fill is remaining, if any? And I'd like to know how much, so we can decide if there's another special permit required. But that's one question of many, and I'm sure there's some others that people may have.
How many yards of fill did you put in?
I guess we'd have to ask.
Probably about 450 yards.
I wasn't involved in 2012, so I'm not...I'm not sure of the history portion of it.
So... So, you had the permit for 500 yards?
Yes. Actually, the original permit was approved for 750 cubic yards. And so, that leads me to believe if there's 300 cubic yards remaining, it doesn't require a special permit from this board, it would require it from the town engineer. So, thank you for answering that.
Okay. Do you show on the current plan the new contours with what's been added to date?
This is existing topography that's shown on this plan, as it sits right now.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add, after you and I spoke this morning, I spoke with Jason today, and I asked the same question, because they look remarkably similar. From the 2012 plan, like the contours were the same, but you said your surveyor went out and shot in the grades?
Yes.
And part of the wetland flagging piece was done, as there was an enforcement order for the Conservation Commission done in January?
Yes.
And Margaret Bacon, so wetland scientist, went out there and had to re-flag wetlands, so those flags on here are also still current and non-expired. So, that's...those are two big questions I had coming in as well.
So, he has up to 300 yards left to remain to fill? And the conservation is still in order, still flagged? And your new plan, you're asking for a vote on a special permit for a new Hammerhead lot?
Yes.
Because the other one's expired or hasn't been recorded or? And with the new one, will you show us again, for everyone, where the handle and driveway will come in?
Yep. The driveway is gonna come in...there's an existing kind of accessway through there now.
It's gonna be, but that's the new 50-foot frontage and the handle strip for the Hammerhead lot?
And that's where the driveway's gonna continue to come down. It is shifting over maybe 10 or 15 feet, so it is within this 50-foot strip. It's a little bit, you know, it's probably right along the property line currently, a little wrap around here, the road to the house, over here.
He's supposed to have a circle that will show the house within that circle?
Yeah, he just showed the circle, not where the house is, but, I mean, the circle would fit anywhere in there.
Doesn't have to show where the house is.
So, through the chair, that is subjective, that is, the board can't decide whether or not they want the house located within the circle or not, that is one of our regulations. So, once the board determines that such location results in less impact to adjoining properties, keeping more character to the neighborhood. So, it's up to the board if you want it outside the circle or not.
So, you show the circle?
The circle is showing right here. What is the circle? I mean, does that have to be free of wetlands too, or how does that work?
It doesn't need to be.
Right. I don't know why he showed it. I mean, it could have been holding it.
Circle's here, and you've got the house over here. Scott, how do you feel?
No questions at this point.
John?
I've got a couple. Where the contour lines drop off here, if you're looking at the plan, see in the subtlety direction toward the lower circle and the proposed reserve septic area? Your contour line's in there, your fill goes a lot further than that to the right.
The fill goes a little bit, almost to where the reserve area is, not quite to the reserve area.
Yeah, but you don't show any contour lines over there. Your contour line's in right at the end of the driveway, and the fill comes way down past that.
The fill goes to pretty much where we show the reserve area, so, yeah, there's a little gap of topography missing there.
So, in that light, how can you tell me that these contour lines aren't the same as they were to begin with? I got no proof that there's a change between the previous, which I wasn't here for, and this. Because you're creating wetlands all around here, the way you have the fill in there now, just by what I've seen. And the other question I have is why isn't there a DEP fill sign up front with the file number on it?
I can kind of...
We're not at conservation now.
Exactly. So, there's a pending violation notice of intent you need to file with the Conservation Commission, and I always recommend with this board that that's at least filed. But through our discussions now, one of the things the board could consider, instead of waiting for CONCOM approval, because in the real world, you want to make sure that you get approval to do something before you spend the money to engineer or design something. So, in this case, the applicant wants to see if the special permit's approved before they can pursue the technical expertise of the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. That also includes permitting with the Board of Health for a septic, for the septic plant, that's part of the design too, right?
Yes.
So, one of the things I was considering, if the board's considering approving this project, and I know there's several questions, but I would recommend the condition that the plan isn't...the A&R plan isn't endorsed until Conservation and Board of Health are satisfied. So, if the special permit's something you can get through, you still hold the A&R endorsement until such time that those are approved.
I ask one more question. Was there a perk test done now with the proposed septic tank, supposed to be?
Yes.
John, would you like to see the contours?
I would.
In the reserve area?
Yeah, I'd like it. Another question, this fill over here on the right is real dark gray. If you went down the way, it's real dark gray. It looks like grindings from the photo, I can't tell. But if you have grindings there and you have wetlands behind you, that's a violation. Can't have asphalt grindings in your wetland.
Wood chips.
Black wood chips?
What are we talking about on the plan?
It's out of the plans in the photo, yeah.
So, I should, to the chair, just want to note that when filling was done, and the enforcement order was issued by the Conservation Commission, that was January 18th or so, and then by their March meeting, the enforcement order was lifted to determine that the work of fill being done was not located within the wetland area, so they lifted the enforcement order. So, CONCOM has...has any fill been done since?
No.
So, there's still a pending NOI filing for proposed work that would have to go before CONCOM anyways.
Yeah, you have some grinds down there, right inside, the driveway going down, small pile, maybe three yards, four yards.
I just want to, if I can clarify too, I mean, I don't know if maybe you're thinking that there's been fill in the wetlands, but there's nothing that's been in the wetlands.
No.
You said you thought it was creating a wetland.
Where you just told me where the grindings was.
Yep.
It's within 100 feet of the wetlands.
Okay.
You can't have that. It's asphalt.
And again, I'm not sure exactly.
He said it wasn't asphalt, John, he said it was wood chips.
I do have some grindings down there.
Oh, you do?
Right. Definitely need a wetland.
It's more than two or three yards. Look at the size of the boat in the back.
Big pile of wood down there.
And the grindings on it to the left of the boat? Or to the right here? Or this?
That gray pile right there, that's grindings. See a low spot over here?
Yep.
Close to there. So, it rains, it goes down there, winds up in the wetlands, it's a violation.
So, CONCOM should see that.
May I ask a question, the applicant?
Sure.
How soon do you expect to be filing with the commission?
The plan's...the septic plan's done, so we're ready to file now.
Wendy?
I don't have any questions right now.
What's that?
So, John, would you like to see elevations and contours put on that part?
Absolutely.
With the results of the CONCOM filing?
I'd like to see an accurate plan of the actual fill area, because this isn't accurate.
You went there.
I went there today.
Okay. Scott, how do you feel about that, John's? Do you agree with him? Wendy?
I agree with John.
Yeah, I agree, if for nothing else, even if it's just form, it should have full detail.
So, you just want us to fill in the gap for the topography that's missing here?
Might I just explain, John, exactly what you're looking for?
I'm just not sure, I mean, is this?
Well, you...where the proposed reserve septic area is?
Yep.
You have no contour lines there. I don't know if that's on top of L, bottom of L, whatever. The contour line should extend well past that to show where that septic system may or may not drain. So, you have to have enough earth around that septic system for it to drain properly, correct?
Well, when...
You can't put it at the edge of a banking.
This proposed...this reserve area is a what-if 30 years from now, if a new system fails, it can go over here? That's all that's for, there's nothing...we're not proposing anything over here. I mean, it could've been holding it to
The circle's here and you got the house over here. Scott, how do you feel?
Uh, no questions at this point.
John?
I got a couple. Where the contour lines drop off here, if you're looking at the plan, see in the subtlety direction toward the lower circle and the proposed reserve septic area? Your contour lines end there, your fill goes a lot further than that to the right.
The fill goes a little, little bit almost to where the reserve area is, not quite to the reserve area.
Yeah, but you don't show any contour lines over there. Oh, your contour lines end right at the end of the driveway. And the fill comes way down past that.
The fill goes to pretty much where we show the reserve area, so, yeah, there's a little gap of topography missing there.
So, in that light, how can you tell me that the, these contour lines aren't the same as they were to begin with? I got no proof that there's a change between the previous, which I wasn't here for, and this. Because you're creating wetlands all around here, the way you have the fill in there now, just by what I've seen. And the other question I have is why isn't there a DEP fill sign up front with the file number on it?
I can, uh,
Kind of
Find that conservation, no, no. Exactly. So, there's a pending filing noticement intent you need to file with the Conservation Commission, and I always recommend with this board, uh, that that's at least filed. Uh, but, um, through our discussions now, um, one of the things the board could consider, instead of waiting for CONCOM approval, because, um, in the real world, you want to make sure that, um, you get approval to do something before you spend the money to engineer and design something. So, um, in this case, the applicant wants to see if the special permits approved before they can pursue, uh, the technical expertise of the noticement intent with the Conservation Commission. That also includes permitting with the Board of Health for a septic, for the septic plant, that's part of the design too, right?
Yes.
So, um, one of the things I was considering, if the board is considering approving this project, and I know there's several questions, but I would recommend the condition that the plan isn't, uh, the A&R plan isn't endorsed until Conservation and Board of Health are satisfied. So, if the special permit's something you can get through, you still hold, um, the A&R endorsement until such time that those are approved.
I ask one more question. Was there a perk test done now with the proposed septic tank, supposed to be?
Yes.
John, would you like to see the contours?
I would.
In the reserve area?
Yeah, I'd like it, yeah. Another question, here, this fill over here on the right is real dark gray. If you went down the way, it's real dark gray. It looks like grindings from the photo, I can't tell. But if you have grindings there and you have wetlands behind you, that's a violation. Can't have asphalt grindings in your wetland.
Wood chips.
Black wood chips? It's not in the plans in the photo, yeah.
So, I should, through the chair, just wanted to know, is that, um, when filling was done and the enforcement order was issued by the Conservation Commission, that was January 18th or so? And then by their March meeting, the enforcement order was lifted to determine that the work of fill being done was not located within the wetland area, so they lifted the enforcement order. So, CONCOM has, uh, and has any fill been done since?
No.
So, there's still a pending NOI filing for proposed work that would have to go before CONCOM anyways.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me, you have some, uh, grinding down there, right inside, driveway going down, small pile, maybe three yards, four yards.
Just want to, if I can clarify too, I, I, I mean, I don't know if, if maybe you're thinking that there's been fill in the wetlands, but there's nothing that's been in the wetlands.
No.
You said you thought it was creating a wet
Where you just told me where the grindings was.
Yep.
It's within 100 feet of the wetlands.
Okay.
You can't have that. It's asphalt.
And again, I'm not sure exactly
He said it wasn't asphalt, John, he said it was, uh, wood chips.
I do have some grindings down there.
Oh, it's do
Right. Definitely need a wetland
It's more than two, three yards. Look at the size of the boat in the back.
Big pile of wood down there.
And the grindings on it to the left of the boat? Or to the right here? Or this?
Yeah. That gray pile right there, that's grindings. See a low spot over here?
Yep.
Close to there. So, it rains, it goes down there, winds up in the wetlands, it's a violation.
So, CONCOM should see that.
May I ask a question, applicant?
Sure.
Um, how soon do you expect to be filing with the commission?
Uh, the plan's, the septic plan's done, so we're ready to file now.
That's not happening. Not happening. Wendy?
I don't have many questions right now.
What's that?
So, John, would you like to see elevations and contours put on that part?
Absolutely.
And with the results of the CONCOM filing?
I'd like to see an accurate plan of the actual fill area, because this isn't accurate.
You went there.
I went there today.
Okay. Scott, how are you feel about that, John's? You agree with him? Wendy?
I agree with John.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree if nothing, if for nothing else, it's, even if it's just form, it should have full detail.
So, you just want us to fill in the gap with the topography that's missing here?
Might as well explain, John, exactly what you're looking for.
I mean, is this
Well, you, you, where your proposed reserve septic area is.
Yep.
You have no contour lines there. I don't know if that's on top of L, bottom of L, whatever. The contour line should extend well past that to show where that septic system may or may not drain. So, you have to have enough earth around that septic system for it to drain properly, correct?
Well, when
Can't put it at the edge of a banking.
This, this, this proposed, this reserve area is a, is a what-if 30 years from now, if a new system fails, it can go over here? That's all that's for. There's nothing, we're not proposing anything over here.
Correct, but if it's, if it's proposed as a reserve area,
Mm-hmm.
It has to be ready to go. That septic system could fail in five years, and now you're down there. And if that isn't properly graded, the way this plan gets approved, you could drop a septic tank in there, and where are you gonna put the, uh, leach field? You know what I mean? If that's right at the edge of a banking.
We had the Board of Health out here to witness these, and it's, it's, it's beach sand. The whole site is beach sand.
I'm not saying it isn't, but
It's not gonna, I mean, we can show, we can, if you show the rest of the topography, it's just, I, I, I just don't know what's
My biggest concern is that you're showing where the fill drops off, and it, and the fill goes almost to the
It goes to the, pretty much the edge of the, because we went right beyond it to do the test bits.
Right, but the contour lines don't go that far.
Right.
So, it's not an accurate representation of the fill that's been brought in.
Okay. I just didn't realize this was anything to do with fill that was brought in. I thought we were just trying to get a hammerhead lot here. I didn't, that's what I don't, you know, so I'm not, uh... There's nothing on the application about fill or any, I don't know what we're, again, I wasn't involved in 2012.
Right.
We're just trying to get those hammerhead lots through.
2012 was approved. I never followed through with it. My kid wasn't sure yet.
Normally, CONCOM would have to approve the lot before we approve it, or during, or
And, and a, you know, case like this
Concern seems to be that there's those excessive grindings, the grindings that John was talking about that are near the, the wetlands, which would travel down in.
Yeah, well, yes, and also, I also don't want to do Conservation Commission's job on behalf of the planning board, and I understand that these are things that, and I don't like doing conditional approval pending conservation. I'm not a big fan of that either, but in this, in this is like this, where it's an A&R, I'm sorry, a hammerhead lot with an A&R plan that would have to come back to us, you could condition it based on approval from Conservation and then not endorse the plan unless Conservation has approved it. We could go that route too, and it's, it's set up for that way. Otherwise, I would always recommend Conservation first, but there is an avenue here, which you could do that.
It's up to the board.
Yeah. I do have one additional thing I'd like to add, and it came through our building commissioner. So, um, front yard setback. Um, front yard setback in this zone, I believe this is residential, or it's all R, and it's, um, front setbacks 40 feet. I was just, the front setback, uh, isn't just like the front of the driveway, this would be the front from the other lot, so what's shown
Whole section would be front setback?
It would.
Okay.
And that shows the house at 22 feet or so, and if you're within the front setback.
Okay.
So, either that's gonna get located differently, or you're looking for a variance from the front setback.
Okay, yeah, let's slide the house down.
That would also move it closer to the lot lot, too.
Yeah, but we're 60, 70 feet away, so...
But, um, sorry, yeah, through the chair, uh, several of the butters came by and visited our town hall throughout the last week, and
I'll have a chance to speak.
Yes, and some of you saw, uh, some written comments that were from, um, one of the via butters, so I'm, um, I'm like, curious to hear what they have to say also.
Scott, do you, are you, uh, along with John, that you'd like to see before we do anything, uh, before a vote, would you like to see the contours and then the Conservation ruling?
I'd like to condition it on the Conservation, you know?
So, you'd rather wait until that's done and they, they get approved and, like, uh...
Well, I'm fine with conditioning an approval on, based on Conservation's approval.
As Matt spoke before?
Yeah, exactly.
And John, how about you?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Wendy?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead.
Still, it's, um, the front setback of the house still needs to be changed, so I think amended plans are something we need regardless.
Yeah, to show 40 feet.
The topography lines, as you mentioned, it could be done at the same time, I hope, but, um, fill calculation, you mentioned there's an additional 300 cubic yards of fill. I'd love to see a cut sheet, cut analysis, if that's something that can be done here or not. I'd be curious to know what the volume of fill is, at least if it's on the plan, then we know it's not gonna exceed 500 cubic yards and doesn't need a special permit, so I'd be
I mean, I don't have an old topography plan, but, I don't know.
Well, you're gonna have to get something to go by.
Is there an old plan in the town? I mean, I don't have an old topography plan.
I do have the old one. This one was approved six years ago. Whole lot there.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Yeah, I live on 179
Could you just state your name and address, please?
Uh, Jean Courtney, 179 South Street. Uh, my biggest concern is open thing, because, um, six years ago, we had that permit, and I want to know if someone's really watching him, what he's putting down there, because I've seen some stuff down there that, uh, it didn't seem to go with, uh, with the plan.
You mean material that
Someone is actually watching him, what he's putting down there, because of, we do have a well too, and
So, you're saying the material that you saw going in seemed to be questionable?
In my, my opinion.
That's
And I just want to know if there's another, is there a timeframe for this project?
That would be an issue that you would probably address with the code enforcement officer
Okay.
For the town, Caleb Moody. And you can call there, he would be able to go, and probably he may still be able to see if he thinks anything's questionable.
Okay.
You would, you could address that through him to, for your own satisfaction, because we don't really have a purview over that.
Okay.
We establish how many yards of fill that they can put in, but unless we know that something's wrong going in, like the grindings that John said shouldn't be there on Conservation Commission, uh, guidelines, right? Then we can have, we can also ask him to look at that to see if they're into proper, if, and what he's, his feeling is on that. Matt will make that request to the code enforcement officer based on the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You speak of these grindings?
Would you just state your name?
Joey, I'm on 163 South Street. Um, why are we even talking about any asphalt grindings behind a residential house? Why are they there? I'm curious, why are they there?
I, I don't know, and I'm not sure if anyone else on the board knows whether or not they would be allowed as clean fill, but we will ask the building, code enforcement officer
Well, it's a big pile like this, like you can see on Google Earth.
Matt's gonna make a request on behalf of the board
It goes in, it comes out.
To look at that.
So, uh, through the chair, um, pending Conservation application. When the noticement application goes to the Conservation Commission, it'll all be notified of another public hearing. It's in this room with Conservation Commission, and they will conduct a site visit, and if they see anything out of the ordinary, just like you've mentioned, they're gonna note that as part of their public hearing proceedings, and if it's something they want removed, they can ask for it. That's for the Conservation
All right, okay. Fine. I just, I don't know why we're talking about these, these grindings, you know, like, and he says they're wood chips.
Sounds ridiculous.
I think maybe he meant those wood chips in addition to the grindings.
Good, I guess.
The grind is before the driveway.
From your driveway?
Can't happen.
I don't think so.
We can't have it.
I don't think so.
Guys can't do that. Questions through the chair?
Mary Courtney at 179 South Street. I, I just have a question, uh, further of that. This Conservation person will be down once or whoever to oversee, who look what's on the property, but is there an ongoing inspection? Is it a one-time inspection, we don't see anything, or does someone inspect periodically?
You mean, they bring in some fill, it's okay?
Right.
They bring in some more and nobody's watching, and there's no
Right, so is there, is there an ongoing periodic inspection as the project goes along?
How many inspections did you have of that? For, so, and Matt, Matt, do you know whether they periodically inspect, or they just do start and finish? I, I don't know.
Through the fill process, um, one, I know they can't park in areas where you bring in fill. So, if, if you have to park under the fill or whatnot, that's something the Board of Health would have to do. Building Department and Board of Health would have a permitting mechanism and, uh, regulations to follow there, so that's their, that's their wheelhouse, it's not mine, unfortunately, but I know there's several inspections along the way for them, and
And if anybody has any questions, you can always call the code enforcement officer or ask to speak with the chairman, chairperson or responsible party for the Conservation Commission at any time. Anyone can ask those questions. That's what they're there for.
Perfect. Um, is there a time, when this permit is given, is there a timeframe for an actual residence to be built?
Well, if he puts the hammerhead lot and he files and does everything else, then I thought it was forever.
So, um, through the chair, a special permit decision under master general law is good for up to three years.
Three years.
Once it's recorded at the registry.
Okay.
So, once this permit passes its pill period, if it's, if it's approved, it passes the pill period, it's to be taken by the applicant down to the registry to be recorded. From then, it starts at two or three o'clock, depending on what this board decides, but up to three years.
But if it's not in three years, it can just be refiled again for another three years, and this can just be an ongoing
It would have to be refiled, yes.
Have a random process.
But it would have to be resurveyed, the wetlands flags would be expired after three years too, so there'd be an expense for the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
I think what the lady is getting at is it's a perpetual, it's like a strip mine back there. Perpetual 24-hour day, seven-day-a-week
Wood chips.
365 days a year. You know, backhoe, you know, you know, it's Little Digger's construction, you know? I mean, that's what I'm getting at with the grindings. Why are these grindings down there?
As I said
Anyway, I don't care whether they're next to
You should call Caleb Moody the
Oh, he's been there. He was just there.
I think you need to talk to him yourself, and then you can have your own satisfaction after you've spoken with him. I'm sure he'll make an appointment with you and come down and look at it.
I, I will do that.
Why don't you make a reference to that to him?
Sure.
Anyone else from the audience like to speak?
I do have complete photos here, of, you know, if you'd like to see them. They go on and on and on, right from my back window.
Through the chair, anything
If you want to show them to the board.
Yeah, anything you wish to submit to us, send to the office, too.
You know, they're all dated. Just, you know, all dated. It's just to show that it just goes on and on. I guess these are the grindings from his driveway, from Albert, uh... You know, Albert Asphalt.
Do you mind making, uh, it seems like you have a lot, but
The bottom end of my driveway, through my back yard.
Would, would, would a 18-wheeler do a little driveway like that?
I don't think so.
We'll just pass these on, and this is something you should show to
Yeah, um, well, I, I need to keep that, too.
Yes.
Just want to go over hammerhead lot criteria, just for the group, so. All hammerhead lots must meet the following criteria under our, under our bylaws. Set a minimum 50 feet frontage on except the town road, which this proposal does. This meets the square foot dimensional requirements of the zone, which it does.
That is zone what, man?
Zone residential R.
Which is?
Uh, 60,000 square foot lot. Must contain an area in which circle with a diameter equal to the normal frontage requirement, made place without touching any property line, and that's there. Access must be across the frontage of the lot, and the driveway is being proposed across the frontage. Must be limited to a single-family dwelling. Should not be located in the handle of the hammerhead lots, the driveway, for example. The house cannot be located there.
The driveway can be located.
Yes, but not the, not the house. And must have adequate access, the buildable port, I'm sorry. Must have adequate access for emergency vehicles, fire, et cetera. And cannot, shall not be further divided to reduce its area to create additional building lots. So, any hammerhead lot cannot be further divided, so unless it's through, like, formal subdivision proceedings, but, um, would not be able to take advantage of the hammerhead lot through a modification or anyways if this is approved.
On this parcel?
Correct.
There's no other hammerhead lots allowed?
Correct.
Unless it was reconc, done as a subdivision?
Full subdivision with a roadway, yes.
The road, town-approved road and everything else?
Yes. And the last criteria isn't a regularity factor, it's an engineering equation, and the, the, the lot meets the irregularity.
Did it need it, when, was this where the frontage of the hammerhead?
That one doesn't have to, just because that's being declared a non-budable lot. That's not part of the hammerhead lot. So, it meets all the criteria for a hammerhead lot, however, some of those items we mentioned earlier, I'd like to see on the plan or amended prior to
And the votes, uh, board's gotta decide whether or not they would like the house to be shown in the circle, or where it is is okay.
It's gotta be board. Yes, uh...
Could've come back about 20 feet.
You just slide that circle open, right?
Yes, as long as you can fit it in the area.
I have a question. My name is Auntie Maria, I'm on 165 South Street. Um, is, does this point address the issue of erosion of what is being, with this building going in and the bill affecting the other, um, butters' property, or is that somebody else?
That would be the code enforcement officer.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know.
And or the town engineer?
Sure. And through the chair, in addition, possibly the Conservation Commission, too, I would assume that the future filing, the noticement intent, would show erosion control measures, hay bale, zilf fence, or straw wall to some degree. So, that'll be on that plan also. Jason?
So, with the house location, can you approve this plan even though it's showing the house that close to the property line?
No. Till you get away, it's gotta be redrawn anyway. Correct.
Make a motion to continue?
What's his other comment?
Any other comments from the audience? Board members? Applicant? Would we like to continue the, yes, sir?
No, not me, no.
Oh, okay. Mark, was that you?
No.
Oh. Would you like to continue the public hearing till they come back with the print with the house in the circle and move back the 40 feet, the contours and
And the Conservation Commission.
And the Conservation Commission approval. Do you have a timeframe? The next meeting is February 27th. Would that be too soon, or would you like to have it a little more time?
Well, we won't have Conservation approval by then, for sure.
Commission would meet the next day.
And we don't have it in yet anyway, so it wouldn't have made the plan
Oh, yeah.
So, when would, when's the next planning board meeting after that? I know we have one on the 20th
It's March 13th.
Which would be the day before Conservation again, or?
Yes.
So, we'll have to maybe do the second meeting
27th? Well, keep in mind, this board could also, um, close its hearing and then vote at a following meeting to render the decision.[1647.92]
Well, they might want to leave the hearing open just in case you have some new, something newer. If you're not, you won't be able to, if something comes up.
Yeah.
Probably should keep it open.
Yeah, it's, I guess, we need them all, so it doesn't matter if one falls or the other.
You went down my yard today, he drove on the grindings. I put him in the driveway driving down back. Now the grind is at four, he drove on it today. So the grind is here for?
27, 13?
Yeah, 27, that's fine.
March.
Okay. We'll go to the next meeting two weeks out.
Well, the 13th just made it one day short, so the 27th should make it.
Should. That means it wins.
We won't have any, we won't have anything from the conservation commission until at least March 14th, so.
So you want to wait until the 27th of March or the next meeting in?
Well, I guess we don't have a choice, right, to wait till the 27th? Because we're not going to hear from conservation till the 14th?
If I may recommend, I'd recommend just holding the meeting on March 13th, just in case. Just for, just for the reason being that, um, there's appeal periods and then there's signatures and it could get, end up getting dragged out. Yeah. So I'd suggest them, March 13th, make the plan revisions, get them back to us.
All right.
Take a motion to continue the hearing to March 13th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. This hearing will be continued to March 13th, 2018.
7:05.
At 7:05.
Yes, sir. I still continue.
All right, here's what I have.
Go on and say it.
Okay, I'll go on here, hearing ain't going up here. It's probably through lines of the camera.
Colin Affrey?
Yeah. Those were the questions. Yeah.
Okay, good stuff, Brad.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
The applicant is Sweb Development USA LLC requesting site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the urban zoning bylaws for the development of a six-megawatt photovoltaic solar installation located at 430 Rochdale Street. This was continued from January 9th, 2018, per the applicant. We also have a 7:15 public hearing. The applicant is Seaboard Solar Holdings LLC requesting site plan approvals under section 9.4.1 of the urban zoning bylaws for the development of a five-megawatt solar voltaic installation on five separate parcels on property located at 476 and 500 Lester Street. This public hearing was continued from January 9th, 2018, at the applicant's request in both cases. At this time, I will recuse myself as chairman and participate from the audience as a private citizen. And Jason will take over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Applicant SWEB Development USA, come on up.
Good evening, guys.
How you doing?
Not too bad. So, I have this in the slide presentation form. Thank you, Ed. So, yeah.
Some of the graphics might be a little wacky. See what happens.
Yeah, should be good. So, yeah, thanks for having us tonight, members of the board. We aren't requesting any decisions tonight, we just want to keep you basically updated on where we stand in the project. So, this presentation will just kind of give a quick reminder, refresher of who we are, what we're planning to do, and just give you a status update of where we are with the project. So, the project area in question is off of Rochdale Street. I'll use the mouse here so folks at home can see as well. So here's Rochdale Street, running north-south. Our parcel area, 120 acres, is outlined in red. The project area in question is this open field here, up on Rochdale Street. The interconnection point, I'll actually show you that as well. We plan to put solar in this open field, pretty much fill it with solar panels. It'll be roughly 5.8 megawatts, maybe a little bit less at this point. And we plan to run down High Street, upgrade the power lines here and connect to the three-phase power lines here on Rochdale Street. So, here's a drawing of the plan. We have made some modifications from the initial submission, and as we go forward, we've made a few other modifications based on some feedback from one of the butters. So, the red outlined areas represent locations where we formerly had solar panels and we're going to move them. So, some of them have been moved up to the northern area. There's actually a nice flat area in the woods up here. We have to cut down a few trees, but it's worthwhile as we can get them out of sight of some of the butters. Additionally, when you get the full and final plans, there'll be additional modules removed here, just to kind of span the entire area that is in view of one of the butters. And there's a particular pine tree that started to see, but maybe I'll bring a snapshot next time we come, that we're going to keep them, keep them away from as a consultation with one of the butters. We're also going to include a landscaping plan, which will include screening options, which will go on the butters' property. I've added a bit more trees to this landscaping plan. We're going to be consulting with the butters as we go forward, just to make sure that screening is in line with all of their expectations, so. Yep, so that's the plan. Peer review update, we've been in touch with Graves Engineering, who's reviewed all of our plans and come up with 36 points, requests for clarification, some modifications in there. Most of it comes down to a higher resolution on some of the stormwater features, as well as some of the, some of the grade, so they can just get a closer look. So we're going to be redoing the stormwater report with a few different assumptions, as well as adding a higher clarity on zoom, zooming in on some of the infrastructure. So, yeah, we've been in consultation with our consultant, engineering consultant, Weston Simpson, as well as Graves, so we plan to have that report finished, the new report finished by early March. So I suspect we'll be back in March 13th for that meeting. So, yeah, the final plans will be obviously worked on with consultation with the butter as well. Just to give a sense of where we stand in terms of transportation, just as a refresher, when we go into site development, taking construction down the road, we're looking at about 53 trucks in total, which will transport our equipment, that's solar panels, racking, and all of the electrical wiring equipment that will go in underneath the modules. About 53 trucks in total. We plan to only transport during the hours of 10:00 AM, 2:00 PM. And the route that I'm about to show will show how we're going to take a bit of a longer route around to avoid the school zones and avoid that congested traffic zone on West Street, so. Here is our planned traffic route. Come off 290 here, go down Route 20, and then up around 56 to get to Rochdale Street this way, rather than taking this shortcut, which would take us through a school zone, as well as influence traffic on West Street there. So, expected construction schedule, in accordance with the zoning board, construction will only take place between Monday and Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, as well as we've got a window on Saturdays as well, nothing on Sundays or holidays. Final review by National Grid is underway, we've been in close touch with them. In mid to late May, we expect our final analysis to be completed from National Grid in terms of what we need to connect to the power line, so that should be happening this sprint. The full construction period should take about 75 days, and we're planning for a late summer, autumn construction. Ideally, we would start operating this project right at the tail end of 2018. That's a fall, goes well with the state rolling out its new legislation for solar. So that's still in the process of coming out, we're expecting that new legislation to hit this summer. And presumably, you know, there won't, there won't be too many speed bumps and delays. Even if there is, we expect we might be able to be finished with everything by the end of this year, so. And, yeah, that is the update. And, yeah, any questions?
Thank you. Anyone?
Just a quick question, the 75 days, that calendar, are working days?
I believe it's working days, but I'll double-check on that. Sarah, our Gantt chart expert, is at a different meeting tonight, but I'll get you that for next time.
Anyone else?
Will you be putting in any screening on your property at all, or?
So, there's potential to put some screening on the southern part of the parcel. There's another neighbor just to the south, and right now, there's already some trees, you know, blocking the view there. But when we come up with the landscaping plan, we're going to take a closer look at that and see if it makes sense to put in screening there. That would probably be the only screening that would be on our property. The site is fairly well-contained already, just from natural growth around. And the only real perspective where you get a view of the property is from one of the butters across the street. And we've, you know, in consultation with him, we've decided that there'll be an option that at any point during a 10-year period, he can say, okay, I want you guys to come in and put in trees now. And at that point, we would execute that landscaping plan on his property.
So you haven't heard from that other butter that sits down there where the panels are going to be right, not High Street, that one right there?
Yep, we spoke, we've spoken to them, and we're going to chat with them again about, you know, whether they want screening, which would go on our property just above. So, again, yeah, there are some trees there, but, um, yeah, if they, if they want it, we're happy to put it in, so.
Okay. Any comment from the audience?
Mike, is the 75 days contiguous, or I don't know if that's what John meant, or?
Yes. Yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be contiguous, so.
Not 15 days a year?
Yeah, definitely, yeah. We get up there, we want to get that window late summer into the fall when it's dry, you know, it's an easy time to work. And, yeah, it's cheaper to do it continuously. We want to get our, get our electricians out there, get our equipment onto site, get it built, and then we've got a few more projects we're hoping to build this year too, so we're going to get the crew out of those fast as we can onto the next one. So, yeah.
Great, thank you for the update, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Actually, the town planner might want to hear something. Sorry. He's kind of, he's kind of a big deal.
I have one question, 53 trucks, I assume that's a total volume of trucks, but not necessarily trips?
I think that's trips, but let me double-check that.
I just want to show you something that we had from a solar project in Oxford. So they gave us like a day-by-day trip generation chart like this.
Yes.
And for sure that what you guys are not, but, um, you must see 53, I mean, this was a 120-something acre project and you could fit 53 in two days. And this was a several-month project, so I was curious. That might be the amount of trucks you guys have, but the amount of trips might be different.
Definitely. Let me, let me double-check on that. Actually, the installer's local to here, so I can, I'll email you that, that you can circulate to the board.
Okay, that'll be good.
As soon as I can.
Thank you. So, as Mr. Carey mentioned, alluded to already, we did receive peer review comments back from Graves Engineering February 2nd. They're working to address these comments through the letter to the board in addition to plan amendments, and I believe that's, that's where we are now.
Exactly. Yep, yeah, so March 2nd is when we expect to have it completed, and then I guess that would put us at the, that March, that really March, I think would be.
Okay. Okay, and, oh, additional question. Already through the zoning board, did you get your decision rendered?
Yeah, we have the document they sent us, but I'd like to, I was hoping to double-check with Sheila, but I guess she's out these days, so, um, so, yeah, I'd like to get that...
She'll be there tomorrow.
Okay, great, yeah, so I'll chat with her, I'd like to get that recorded and, you know, and everything.
And conservation was already done?
Yeah, that's right.
Great. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Do we have to continue this or is it slated?
It wouldn't need to be continued.
All right, thank you. Great, appreciate it.
Thanks to us, yeah, forward to next time.
We have an update.
Looking for the March 13th?
Yes, yeah.
Can I have our vote to continue?
We have a motion to continue to March 13th, 2018.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The vote. Okay, next applicant, next solar applicant, Seaboard Solting, Solar Holdings, please.
Good evening. Someone else, Pedro Rodriguez, I am from Seaboard Solar. I just want to notify you guys that our engineer from Level Snake, he had a personal issue this afternoon, so that's why he's not here with us. I'm just giving you guys an update, and, you know, sadly, some of the engineering equations that you guys might have, I won't be able to answer them. But, so we received the approval from the CBA. We're still waiting to get the document, so we can get it recorded, but we received it about two and a half weeks ago, and that was that kept our project in hold because what's like the biggest issue, it was the delivery of the buildable lots. Since then, we've received the comments back from Graves Engineering. I believe that the main issues, according to Nick's email, was the width of the driveway. So right now, the driveway, I think, is going between like 15 to 12 feet wide, and Graves Engineering recommended us to expand the driveway to 18 feet wide and some points 20, which we're going to. We also are doing some changes on the drainage that were requested by Graves Engineering. And the other thing was the bridge. We just finished last week the structural report, and it was what we thought. The structural support of the bridge and the beams are structurally sound. The only rehab that we're going to have to do is the deck. So the entire wood deck that is there right now is going to come up, and we will, are going to do a prefab, a prefab concrete slab with the railings. So the structural report is done, and now the engineers are working on the rehab. So that's the question. We also met two weeks ago with Chief Moore from the fire department, just to make sure that he was in com, you know, didn't have any comments on the driveway. And he did have some comments, and his main concern was, this is just a working, probably Nick sent me. It's, sorry, he sent it to me this afternoon. Um, what's the streets here? Yeah, Leicester Street's right there. So we added turnaround in every single, in, you know, in the end of every single driveway, and also per the fire department request, he wanted the city road almost going around every single, right? Can you show that for the audience?
This we don't have electronically.
Yeah, we don't have it, you can't, from Nick. But, you know, for the next meeting, we're going to bring all our information and, you know, the same way or comments answering to the board's concern regarding glare, truckin' loads, construction schedule, and all that stuff. We're implementing all those changes into our plan right now, like for example, using anti-glare, solar panels, landscape design, planting trees, to minimize the view from the neighbors out in Leicester. We also moved a pipe of the detention pond per request of the neighbor, Shannon, and this down here. And that is where we stand. We're still ongoing with the conservation commission, because our meeting was a few days after the CBA, so same thing, we came, we gave them an update, and we were ready to give our changes tomorrow, but the meeting got moved to next week. And same, so that's where we stand right now. Thank you.
Any comments? Scott?
So you said you are going to be extending the driveways up to 18 to 20 feet?
Yeah, and the other change is that he added a stop location right before the bridge, because the bridge we can now make it wider.
Yeah.
So in case, you know, there's an emergency and there will be like two ambulance in the outside, one of them will be able to park before the truck.
All right.
But this is just, you know, draft.
Draft at this point?
Yeah, I mean, Nick just sent it over to me when, you know, he told me it was not able to make it, so I can present it to the board.
All right. I have concerns about easement access for each of the lots, I mean, when I just see these...
Yeah.
Landlocked parcels, it, you got that zoning known, that's not what we do, so it is what it is.
Yeah, I can talk about that, so we addressed that issue with the CBA. So as, right now, so this, so it was approved with the condition that in the event, I mean, not going to happen, but because there's separate lots, in the event that some of these lots change the ownership, there will have to be a blank easement. If not, like nothing can be...
For access all the way?
Yeah, for access all the way around, because as right now, we cannot grant easements, so it's a lot because we're the owners, we cannot grant it.
Well, it's LLCs, but it's common ownership with the LLCs?
Well, no, the, so the arrays, the projects are different LLCs, but the parcel, the property owner is Seaboard Solar Holdings, so every single law is on Seaboard Solar Holdings.
Okay, okay.
So that's why we're not able to grant any easements, and that was addressed on the power authority in the CBA.
That's, that's my concern at this point. That's, that's my concern at this point. Any others?
Matt? Um, I just want to announce to the folks that are here, and it sounds like you already heard about this, but, um, Conservation Commission originally is supposed to have a meeting tomorrow night, but unfortunately, um, due to some, uh, scheduling issue, it's going to be held next week. So it'll be held on, on two-twenty-one, it's Wednesday next week, instead of tomorrow. So as that's ongoing, Sheila just wanted me to make that known. But otherwise, yeah, uh, peer review already came in from various engineering and plenty of changes to be made. You've been in touch with the fire department, which is great. We've been in touch, talking about, uh, trip generation and, and construction schedule and stuff. So, um, thanks for the update today. Uh, just more information coming, so. Nice just to see that.
Anyone from the audience have a comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brooks?
Uh, will you have the bridge in place, the new bridge, the prefab concrete bridge, that which will go on top of the existing, uh, steel gritted bridge?
Before construction?
Yes, yes. Yes, that, that will have to be rehabbed before construction.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. So we need a motion to continue?
Yes, um, to?
Which meeting? How much time do you think you need?
So we are, so according to Nick, he said that he'll be able to finish everything. By the twenty-seventh, I think that's where he, yeah?
By the twenty-seventh?
No, it's, eh, sorry, so we can be here in the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so continue the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue to February twenty-seventh?
Oh, sorry, got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Here's, um, two minutes. Thanks for your update.
Appreciate it. Is that a new LLC? Do you have LLCs?
Yes. Yes, LLC.
There's got to be one out there. Would you like to continue, Mr. Chairman? He's old, forgot where he was. Member discussion, am I going on to that?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to member discussion, first one is the, uh, associate member vacancies. I'd like to remind everybody at home that we have a vacancy for associate member. Correct. Oh, folks, thanks for coming back. I will relinquish the chairmanship back to its rightful honor. Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
So you want vacancies, Jason?
Yeah.
Anybody have any?
They're still there.
They're still there, so. Don't know when we'll get anybody. Okay, CMRPC delegates, two thousand and eighteen nominations. So Wendy and Scott want it again? Okay.
Uh, no, no.
So I would assume that through multiple conversations with Wendy, she does not want to be our CMRPC delegate of the planning board anymore. So, um, we would, we would require another nomination. What this does is you'll get, you know, you'll get notified of some regional meetings at CMRPC. You can, you can't attend. It's completely optional to you. Usually, I go to these things on our behalf anyways, but it, it is required.
So I nominate Matt.
I, I'm already, I'm a delegate.
He's automatic.
I'm a, I'm an administrative delegate. So we need, um, um, a planning board delegate and a resident delegate. And right now, as it stands, um, now Scott took, uh, John's former spot as the board delegate, so the resident delegate from one of the three.
And I've done it for a few years.
Other volunteers would like to receive an extra email.
I'll do it.
Mr. Favor.
Is there a nomination?
I'm nominating Jason.
Do I have a second?
Crickets.
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye.
So, um, does Scott wish to retain his status as?
Sure.
Delegate?
Okay.
Formally, can we do a nomination?
And nominate Scott.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
No.
This is kind of like, no choice.
All right, thank you. Don't worry, chairmanship's coming up soon. Um, thank you for that. Appreciate it. No additional content. We do have, I believe, one set of minutes.
Three on, yeah, is anybody all here at the same time, or?
We're all here.
So we can do all three of them?
I don't believe so. I think the ninth or the twenty-third were ready. Twenty-third came out late, I think on Friday. And if the members got them, I didn't add them to the package right there.
There was only one pack, one in the package, and Jason and I weren't here, so.
Okay, so the other three of you could vote. That was our five-minute meeting on December twelfth.
You want to do those, just to get them off?
Sure, if you.
Any questions from you, Joe? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of twelve, twelve, seventeen.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye. Here's a vote. Approve the minutes of twelve, twelve, seventeen. So next, we'll have one-nine-eighteen, one-twenty-three, and it's me.
I'll put those on the next, uh, in the packets with the next agenda.
Next meeting on two-twenty-seven.
Yes.
Meeting is what?
It is February twenty-seventh, two weeks. Weather pending.
Any other comment? Any discussion by anyone? No? Does anyone want to stay in the row or so, just to talk?
No.
Make a motion to close.
Make a motion for adjournment?
Adjourn, thank you.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned?